What are, Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Terracio. Weaver. Baron.
Here.
Walker. Mackey.
Here.
English. Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletion, changes?
No requested changes, Madam Chair.
I'll entertain them.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Baron.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. First item, oh, excuse me. The next up on the agenda is the enterprise funds. I'll turn it over to Administrator Brown.
Thank you. Members of council appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you. As you are aware of, we're really in the full swing of our budget process. And what this is, is really just an opportunity for us to share information with you, things that we're going to be asking you to consider as part of the budget process. There are no specific asks today for you to take any action. This is designed, again, to be information to you, and specifically with a focus on enterprise funds. So just briefly, those are the funds that you have set up that ideally operate like a business. When we use the term of, basically, they receive in revenue to pay for the expenditures that they need to provide the service. So ideally, at the end of the day, you want them to sustain themselves. So what you're going to have presented to you is information related to these funds and any associated considerations for how these funds continue to sustain themselves. Certainly, there's been a historical support by this council to support these funds. But again, ideally, these are your enterprise funds and by design are made to support themselves. So with that being said, members of council, we're going to first start by looking at the Jim Hamilton LB Owens Airport. And we're going to have the related departments come up and make the presentation of information to you. So with that being said, are there any initial questions that you have of me as the administrator before we move into the presentations to you this afternoon? Okay. Mr. Eversman, will you please proceed? Just kind of identify who you are, sir, and then proceed.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of County Council, Chris Eversman.
Green button.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Chris Eversman, I'm the Airport General Manager. And thank you for this opportunity to present information about our fiscal '24 budget for the airport. All right. First, as a means of orienting you on the Jim Hamilton LB Owens Airport, which, by the way, will celebrate its 93rd anniversary on Tuesday of next week. So this is, and I assume you can see the presentation that I can see. This is the contents of the presentation. And please feel free, if you are so inclined, to ask questions. So we start out with our mission statement and will not read it verbatim, but just want to highlight a couple of things. We have a primary and a secondary mission. First of all, safety and efficiency. So most of our capital development, as you will see, is funded by grants through the Federal Aviation Administration, which is common certainly for general aviation airports, but also for commercial carriers as well. So part of the mission statement of the Airport Improvement Program, which is how we get those grants, is to improve the safety and the efficiency of our national airspace and all of those facilities that support it. So we thought incorporating that into our mission statement was appropriate. General aviation, unlike commercial carriers that have scheduled air service and also cargo carrying operations like Columbia Metro, we are everything else. And that is kind of what general aviation is. Transportation, although we do highlight and like to emphasize from time to time our function as an economic impact engine for the Midlands of South Carolina, we also think it's important to emphasize that we are very much a transportation hub that serves this area. And then our secondary mission is to be a reliever airport for Columbia Metropolitan. That's why you have two airports within seven miles of one another. And kind of the idea is that the smaller aircraft will go to the smaller airport, thereby relieving the airspace around the larger airport for the larger aircraft and their safer maneuvering. So that is our mission. Little bit about our organization. So the airport sponsor, that's just FAA parlance, is the County Council of Richland County. You are the owner of the airport. I am the general manager and assigned to the Department of Public Works. Probably, in terms of level of effort over the course of any fiscal year, we have probably two full-time equivalent. And I estimate that, that is my time, that is a time of our custodial service, that is a time of our maintenance technicians and things like that to support the airport. And we have three designated liaisons between County Council and the Airport Commission, Ms. Terracio, Ms. English, and Mr. Weaver. Okay, facilities, there kind of gives you an idea, a little bit of inside-baseball technical jargon there, but we are, even though we're 93 years old, we are a well-maintained facility that serves our general aviation needs very, very well. And you will see that in terms of our activity and revenue that we have generated over the last 10 fiscal years. That'll give you an idea of how things are going. So I apologize for, this slide might be a little bit difficult to read. I'll talk you through it. It is an indication of the county revenue as well as our key activity indicator, which is fuel sales. So you see in the chart, you get an idea, again, over the last 10 fiscal years. On the bar chart, on the lower left, the bar graph, you see county revenue. And you can see a steady increase.
Keep talking.
Steady increase in revenue since fiscal '15. And I'll elaborate a little bit more on that in a moment. On the lower right, you see the comparable period and overall fuel sales. And you see how that fluctuates over time. But even with that, we have a pretty good structure. And our county revenue has been steadily on the increase, again, over the last, since fiscal '15. All right?
Is that driven more by cost of fuel or increase in consumption of fuel?
Yes, sir. So two things that I would say. Obviously, cost of fuel and the overall condition of the economy, that will impact aviation traffic, which will translate into activity at the airport. Fortunately, the way we are structured is about 94% to 96% of our revenue that we get as the county actually comes from hangar leases. And we have historically been, and I say historically, my frame of reference is the last 13 years. We have always been at 100% occupancy. And if we have someone that terminates a lease, we have a waiting list and we very quickly backfill with a new tenant. So again, our kind of focus, as we are currently structured, is mostly on hangar occupancy and lease rates for the hangar occupancy. And then that helps us kind of make steady progress even as the economy fluctuates or fuel costs, you know, may go up. So a little bit of a moving target, but again, I point to the shape of those graphs, specifically the one that shows county revenue, and say that that is healthy. All right. Yes, sir.
Something like that.
Yes, sir. It looks like it cut off a little bit. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. All right. A couple of other things to kind of take away, to pull from the preceding slide. We have positive trends in aviation fuel sales between fiscal '21 and fiscal '22. Excuse me. 7.8% increase there. We also have positive trends in jet traffic, jet A fuel sales. And we also, for the first time in recent history, we have a jet as a based aircraft at the airport. We get a fair amount of jet traffic, but to have a jet based at the airport, that is a very, very good thing, and we're very, very glad for that. And then, over the last, between fiscal '21 and fiscal '22, we had a 1.4% growth in county revenue. And we have had, as I pointed out and as you saw on that preceding slide bar chart, a growth in airport operations revenue every year since fiscal '15. So glad of that, and we want to keep that going. In terms of information also that maybe want to be aware of, mentioned about the fact that we estimate about two full-time equivalent employees supporting the airport and its ongoing operations. 90% of our capital development is funded by the FAA. I alluded to that earlier with the Airport Improvement Program and those grants, which we receive regularly. Additional 5% of capital development is funded through a matching grant from the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. So, you know, the neat way of saying it is that a nickel of investment on our part generates a dollar worth of development at the airport. So that's a, it's a good program. It's been in place for a long time. And we take advantage of it. And you will see there are matching funds included in our budget request for the coming fiscal year. Okay, a couple of other bits of related information that I would like to also share as you're considering the airport in its totality. We are also a generator of personal property tax for aircraft. And for the last fiscal year, that was over $200,000. And $132,000 has been paid to date. And then, according to a 2018 statewide airport economic impact study that was done by the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, we have over $16 million of annual economic impact. And that was captured very nicely in the resolution on Tuesday evening for Aviation Week in terms of our visitors, our ongoing employment, and other economic activities. So we believe that the operation of the airport is a good investment for the, not only Richland County, but also City of Columbia and the Midlands as a whole. So in the fiscal '24 budget request, we stayed within the mandated 3% growth cap. But we did move some funds around to better reflect how we actually spend our money day-to-day in terms of running the operation and its maintenance. So we, and again, I will also say that we are very thankful and glad for the support that the County Council, through the administration, has provided to the airport over, again, my whole time being there over the last 13 years. On the next slide, you can see what was requested and what is being recommended in the administrator's budget. And just a couple of things to point out. Depreciation expense, which is not money that we spend ourselves on any direct benefit, if you will, short-term to the airport, but that is reflected in the airport budget. And then, the matching funds, again, as we made reference to funds that we put into the budget to support the grants that we receive from both the FAA and the Aeronautics Commission. So how do we generate our revenue? The next slide, you'll see we have a master fee and rate schedule, and you have copies of it. It's a separate, single page that Lori provided to you before the presentation started. We started this in fiscal '15. And if you've been paying attention, you remember fiscal '15 is the year where we have had steady annual increase in airport operations revenue in that whole time. So I think we've been served by that. If you drill down a little bit and you see the, you can actually discern steps on those graphs. And so we update our schedule, which includes hangar leases. And as those leases get renewed, you know, typically, it's a three-year period for the lease. So at the end of that three-year period, when it's time for renewal, we will have gone through three increases in our annual master rate and fee schedule. So you're going to see a bump. And that's working well. All of the revenue that we, well, almost all the revenue that we generate is actually shared between the county and the fixed-based operator, Eagle Aviation. And that has been the case forever. But I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. And then, several years ago, we initiated a capital improvement fee. We get 100% of that money. And currently, it is $15 per hangar, regardless of the size of the hangar, per month. So that helps us, you know, sustain and goes into the pot for the matching funds as we get those capital development grants from the FAA and the Aeronautics Commission. Okay, just could not miss this opportunity with the key decision-makers for Richland County to just point out, our master services contract and lease agreement with Eagle Aviation, which was an extremely long-term contract, is actually going to expire on June 30 of 2024. And it is definitely my number-one priority, and I think also the airport commissions between now and then, to ensure that we go through whatever process we have to regarding negotiation or procurement in order to have a seamless and smooth transition to a new FBO contract, whether that's with our existing FBO or some other fixed-based operator. So that is vitally important. And again, you're going to be hearing a lot in the coming months about RFI's, requests for information, which were requests for information that we're going to issue to try to see what kind of interest there might be in the aviation community about possibly becoming the designated FBO at CUB.
Fixed-based operators, that mean mainly funded with the funds generated from the fuel?
Yes, sir. So remember, I said that we get about 95% of our revenue from hangar lease payments. The FBO, the way they get their revenue is a little bit different. Probably, their maximum means of generating is fuel sales. Now, we get relatively, we get very little from fuel sales. We have what is called a fuel flowage fee, which is five cents per gallon. It has been five cents per gallon every, forever. And when we initiate our new FBO services contract, we will definitely look to bump that up, maybe on the order of eight cents a gallon, which is sort of what our peer airports charge. And then have a means by which that can be escalated, not necessarily every year, but in future years. But because, like I say, we've been locked into five cents a gallon forever.
You recognize Councilman Weaver and then Ms. Baron.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you for being here today and presenting this. A couple thoughts, looking at this one-page handout here. I see the hangar leases. What's the vacancy rate? I don't see a vacancy. Is there any vacancy?
No, sir. We are, and for, there was a period of time over several months, and again, my frame of reference is 13 years. There was a brief period of time when one of our large corporate hangars was vacant. But then, we could even, we could use that for transient aircraft storage and recoup a little bit of the revenue. But for all intents and purposes, we've been at 100% occupancy the entire time.
That is music to my ears. Could all be so lucky. The second question I have is the monthly office lease rates. That seems cheap to me. I know that's not a big revenue source.
Yes, sir. That is actually a new line that we added to the schedule. We might have had that last year. I can't recall. They are small offices. And like I say, it's a new charge. And would be, would love to get some guidance on that. Would welcome that. Yes, sir.
It seems cheap. And I agree with you. The five cent per gallon, eight cent seems more reasonable.
Yes, sir. That would, I would definitely push for that in the course of our negotiations. And again, even more important, even if we had to give and stay at five cents, definitely want, you know, two or three years down the road to have an escalation put in there.
Yeah, we should probably plan on that. My flyer buddies might not like to hear that, but I say we go to eight. Thank you.
That's going to be our initial position.
I thought Mr. Weaver was just trying to get some room for his airplane.
Thank you. Thank you to you for your presentation. I did notice that there was an increase in the recommended amount for personnel.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that cost per living? What, I mean, it's not a significant increase, but it is an increase.
Yes, ma'am. I'll leave that to the personnel people.
Abhijit Pandey, Budget Director, the personnel increase represents the countywide personnel increase from last year's 92% to about 96%.
Thank you.
And if I can add to that, just Ms. Baron to provide a little clarity. What we're saying is to county members of council, when we budgeted, we utilized a 90% employee field rate. So in essence, we estimated that 8% of all of our positions would be vacant. And so now, we are saying that we estimate that only roughly about 4% of our positions will be vacant. So that's what we meant by that, just in case. There needed to be more clarity for people who are listening in and maybe not necessarily for you.
Well, you might like this answer. This is not an area that I have a lot of expertise in. So, Mr. Eversman, help me understand the benefit of the airport in layman's terms to the citizens of Richland County and Richland County.
Yes, ma'am, certainly. First of all, in very macro, very general terms, I would say that let's start with the $16.1 million of annual economic benefit. That doesn't accrue just to the airport. That is to this area. That is to the Midlands.
Based on?
Yes, ma'am. That was a 2018 study that was performed by the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. And it was a statewide study. And they looked at a number of indicators. And they assigned what they believed to be an appropriate reflection of local economic impact to every airport in the state. And that was the number assigned for us.
Based on the use of our airport?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, indeed. So, you know, in terms of dollars and cents, that is probably where we should start. But in terms of maybe things that are a little less tangible, and again, maybe it's not come onto your radar screen, but there has been talk for the last 10 years about the pending pilot shortage. And, you know, we can all kind of understand how, my gosh, if we had a shortage of pilots, who's going to fly those FedEx planes? Who's going to fly those UPS planes? Who is going to fly those Delta aircraft? Who's going to fly those American Airlines, right? So a pilot shortage would impact everyone, directly or indirectly. The way that pilots get trained is at local general aviation airports that have flight- The way that pilots get trained is at local general aviation airports that have flight schools and have flight instruction. And not only is it flight instruction for, for experienced pilots who need to recertify, it's also for folks who are interested in flying and would like to be pilots and want to enter. Some people will just stay as, as private pilots, maybe for recreational purposes. Other folks might be private pilots for commercial and business, corporate aircraft, things like that. And then others could become, you know, airline pilots. So flight instruction is, is a big, is a big part of it. And then I guess one other thing, not to prolong it too much, but we have a certificated FAA repair station at CUB. And that keeps the fleet flying, whether it's smaller aircraft or maybe smaller to midsize jets. And if you didn't have a general aviation airport where they could base themselves, that maintenance would not get done. So those are a couple, a couple of things. And again, I just, I say those thinking in terms of the benefits of air travel, the benefits of an aviation fleet to the general public, whether folks stop to think about it or not, you know, that's, that's part of the deal.
So do we own any of the airplanes, anything as a county? Do we own?
So the, what, what the presentation that was just given is just for the facility. Now, the sheriff's department does have aircraft.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And they, and they are based at CUB.
Okay, so that was, that's what I was getting to, that we do have, the county has or the sheriff's office has airplanes.
Yes, ma'am. That, that is correct. But I just, I do want to point out, none of what we're talking about here in terms of this budget relate to the sheriff's department and their operation of their aircraft.
We're just talking about the use of it. So that fits into what I'm trying to get to. And the other part is for the corporate world that will be able to use it.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. The, in the airport community, people are fond of saying that the CEO for Scout Motors does not come in on the Greyhound. Comes in on a corporate jet. And we need facilities to support that, of which our airport is one.
That's part of our economic development.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, absolutely. We, you know, we, as I said, we, we like to point out the fact that we are a transportation hub, but we also do have impact on, on economic development and are glad of it.
I just wanted to share from me and also for the citizens to get a better understanding.
Yes, ma'am, understand.
Thank you.
Questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Everman.
Thank you, sir. Director.
All right. So we're going to move on to our next department. We're going to have the director introduce, and then we'll move forward with the presentation.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. Members of council. I'm Mike Maloney, Director of Public Works, and with me is our General Manager of Solid Waste and Recycling, John Ansel.
Hello.
John will be here to answer questions I don't have the answer to. And Director Davis said I could use, use most of his time if we go over, so. Do a little house cleaning on this. First thing we want to talk about, and this, this presentation is, is very close to what we gave last year, but we do have new, new members and it has been a year. But we do want to go over the, the services provided. We do. I'll get a little closer. We do want to provide an update on the, on the services we provide at, with Solid Waste and Recycling Division. And the first thing is collections. And collections is, is the biggest part of solid waste, and we'll be getting into the numbers of that. Collections is picking up the curbside municipal waste or bulk items or yard waste or every other week, the recycling, and just dropping it off at the landfill or the recycling center for, for that. So it's just picking up and moving the materials, but that is our biggest part of our service. There's eight collection contracts, two commercial contracts, and one fleet system contract to provide management of the collection vehicles. The commercial contracts are moving and picking up dumpsters and other things that we have collections in, say, public facilities. The next service we provide is construction and demolition materials landfill, the CND landfill owned by Richland County. Last year, we added some land to it to ensure its viability for many years. It has one grinding contract for the woody material coming in, and then one professional services contract. The landfill closeout, prior landfills that have been capped, there's two of those being serviced by our staff. And then there's the recycling program, which includes the drop-off centers. And a lot of times in our budget, it's, it's, it's labeled the Lower Richland Drop Off Center, but we also have the drop-off center on Clemson Road. And the largest drop-off center is at our landfill on Monticello, just off Monticello Road on Kaufman Road. That includes a hauling contract, and the haulers have to go around and empty the dumpsters of the different containers of materials that come into those drop-off centers. And depending on the activity of those, that hauling contract can get rather large. There's five recycling contracts for the various commodities that need to be recycled, from electronics to tires to oil and the various materials. And then there's two lease agreements. Both the Clemson Road and the Lower Richland Drop Off Center are leased properties privately held by others. The other item that's a service provided and funded by Solid Waste is the Special Services Division. I won't go into a lot of detail on that, but they provide the roadside litter pickup, the refuse control officers with code enforcement, and various site cleanup with their ability to go in and clean up sites for the clamshell trucks. As far as personnel, to provide those services, we have four employees and, and management. We have collections in collections. We have a, a manager supervisor for customer service reps. And thank you for that. Last year, we were able to really provide additional service with that, and the eight collection is inspectors. We are getting some incredible information quickly from the field and able to head off issues, provide residents with information on why their curbside collection was tagged. And we're seeing great improvements in most, and at times, all of our contractors. We also have three roll cart technicians that service and deliver the roll carts, whether they're being repaired or delivered to new customers. And we're, in this budget, here's our first ask, is one new roll cart technician, because that service has been growing. The other item we provide with staff is the construction CND landfill with six employees that provide operations of the heavy equipment and, and, and maintenance of that landfill and its caps and slopes and drainage systems. Then we have the landfill closeout, and we designated one employee, but that employee is part of the six employees that we also have. And so there's seven total employees between those two areas. We also have the recycling and drop-off centers, as we talked about. We have one coordinator for the recycling program. We have two lead drop-off center attendants and one drop-off center attendant employee. So our other ask with employees is we're requesting four new drop-off center attendants. To date, that has been provided by a temporary service. And then just mentioning special services at 15 employees. On the collection side, as I mentioned earlier, it's a, a larger part of our, our budget. This year will be 34.669 million. The curbside costs that we have as the county is, these are the curbside rates that we pay out to the contractors vary from $22 to $27.36 per customer. Backyard service, 39.61 to 45.96 per customer per month. And that is just for, you know, moving it from one place to the next. Collection, again, because consists of eight service areas, and we, last year, added one new contractor, so there are five different contractors out there. The other side of it, besides collections, is what we offer the entire county. Now, that's every resident in Richland County proper, so including the cities and towns in, in, as well as the unincorporated county. There is a millage that's charged as part of the property tax payment, and these are services open to all within the county. And that would be the ability to use the county CND landfill. And that operation is provided at 3.3 million per year. The county recycling and drop-off centers operation at 2.8 million per year. And then the county CND closeouts running about 644,000. Management overall for the entire SWR is 1.2 million, and special services 1.5 million. So those are all the, the costs that we have that would participate in that millage. Going back again to the, the larger number with curbside collection, we kind of given you just a, a reference of what we've had over the last couple of years. We've had the, all those contracts I mentioned were tied to the CPI and the Consumer Price Index. When we were presenting last year, had just been 7%. And then this past January of '23, we came in with 6.4%. So that inflates those 30-plus million-dollar contracts by that amount, depending on what CPI is. We did have contract negotiations over the past year and a half, and that has helped. So we are, and you'll see more details on this, even though CPI is 6.4% that we just experienced, we would be recommending at a 5% rate increase on our collections. These are our CPI-affected contracts, and most of those that are in the black text have been renegotiated, especially all the, the collection area contracts. And you notice those are at 2025 expirations. That's three years after we negotiated those, plus they have up to two more years on those. The ones that are highlighted in, in green are for Area 5B and 7. That will expire on December 31st, so we will be coming to council with a briefing document through one of the committees, probably A&amp;F, for renegotiation of that. And currently, John Ansel and his staff is prepping for a meeting with that particular So in the earlier slide where I mentioned 5%, that is the bottom line on the far right. But this is the, how we're tracking expense, expenses. And so I, I mentioned the different accounts. And then we have a total for those accounts as a separate curbside program and then as a separate millage. So down at the bottom of the left, you'll see a blue line, and that is just intended to separate how we're accounting for those expenditures. The total is 44 million, 44.2 million dollars for the entire solid waste. On the revenue side, we have curbside revenue coming in at, estimated at 33.8 million, which is short of the 35 million we've pointed out. And then we have currently, we, we did a little detailed analysis for you in the upper right, which is the millage taxes at 6.8 million and a recommendation based on projections that we have with the Budget Office of a cap at 7.353 million. And we would be recommending that be utilized. The other item we have, and John Ansel and his staff has worked on a 5% adjustment for the commercial hauling, where we do charge people coming into the landfill. And so those are the items where it says white goods, tipping fee, tire revenue, those items would be up, and those differences represent a 5% increase. And so when we look at our projection or our actual budget of 8.9 million, the 8.944 will provide the surplus we need to be ahead of that for the millage. And then a 5% rate increase will put us above the $35.3 million expense. The result of those increases will actually yield just under a $300,000 surplus, which the enterprise would need because of, you know, past shortages. So we are a part of, you know, paying our, our past debts. So the revenue adjustment on, on curbside collection would look like that. Current curbside service is at 350.57 dollars per year, and that would go to $368.10 per year. Backyard service, last year it went down a little bit to get in line with our contracts, which have, our contractors are charged 1.8 times the value of normal, a normal pickup. And so we, we set that last year, and that actually dropped by, you know, just pennies, basically. But it went down to $631.03. And this year would be representing the 5% increase at $662.58 per year. And again, the millage, we're just recommending, we are recommending utilizing the, the cap. This slide, you can disregard. That was a working slide. So we mentioned the other source of revenue is the, besides curbside, would be the landfill and drop centers if we could charge, but we have just that at the scale at the Monticello Road area landfill. So that, this represents and does show once again those curbside collection fees, but also shows what the commodity fees for the year would be. Roll cart initial setup fee at $75. I don't, I think we're, we're paying around 65 or 68.
68.27 for cart.
Yeah, just to get the roll carts in is 68.25. And if anybody's gone to Amazon to see what those cost, they want like $200 or $300 for them. So we get them in bulk and, and recharge $75 for initiation. CND landfill, everything pretty much going to 26, 25 per ton, except when we get down to mattresses. Obviously, county residents can bring those, and it's got a limit, two, two per day. I don't know how many beds people have, but that would, that would be a lot. Mattress and box spring, commercial would be 3.36 a ton. Unfortunately, beds don't weigh that much. But they are bulky, and we do have limitations in places like Lower Richland Drop Center. We had to stop taking those some time ago because we don't have space. They take up a lot of space. We have, we have that up at Monticello Road, but we don't have space in other areas for that. Tires and commercials, $1.50 each or 150 a ton, represents a 5% increase. Commercial electronic waste is $1.05 a ton. Again, that went from a dollar, so all these just went up 5%. Commercial mulch, 14 a ton, and that is at the landfill, only the place that we can take that kind of material. Latex paints went up to $1.05 per pound from a dollar. And those are the, those are our rate sheets that we want to have, and we would bring to you every year as we have in the new solid waste ordinance.
Before we ask the, I have a general question just about.
You're going to ask, Mr.?
When you, when you, on our tax notices, how are the enterprise funds indicated, particularly at collections and support? Are they separate on our tax notices that goes out?
Mr. Chair, if you, if it's okay.
Mr. Chair, if you, if it's okay. Uh, Mr. Livingston, yes, that it is actually separated out.
But it's whole enterprise fund or is it just collections by itself or something like that?
It's listed, I believe it's listed as solid waste.
Solid waste fees.
Yep, solid waste fees.
The thing I was asking that question is because that, that makes our tax rate look a lot higher in some counties, because there are some counties, for example, attribute collectors, they pay the collector and so it doesn't show up on the bill.
Correct.
It's, I just wanted, so, so at least they know it's there and what it's for though.
Yes, sir.
Mackey, you had a question on that same line.
Thank you. Just want to, I guess a little bit of clarification or reminder. So you're proposing 5% or a cap for funding this upcoming budget. Last year, was it 5% as well? I do not remember.
Uh, last year we had, uh, I can look that up, but I think it was 8.3%.
Was that the cap as well last year?
Oh, on the millage?
Yes.
I don't know if we, we, we were, we were close to it. We were, I recalled that, but I don't know if we hit it.
Recognize Ms. Thomas.
Yes ma'am, last year we did go to the cap on solid waste. I believe it's a three tenths of a mil increase and the auditor has indicated to us this year that it would not really change from that.
Thank you.
Newton?
Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Livingston, let me just say that every single one of my constituents seems to know to the pity what they pay for solid waste services because they always like to tell me about it. So you're about to talk about improvements and so if you should, if you want to answer this question at a later time, that's fine. But my question is, can you tell me, you, you talked about some of it, what is it that we get for this 5% increase? But also from your perspective, what remains to be done even with that increase? Solid waste is a service that affects all of our citizens. I hear about it all the time. And so I want to understand as we pass this budget, how we're helping today, but also kind of what remains for tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. I, I, I did go to the next slide if that's okay, and I think that's a great place to answer that question. One of the things that we're, you know, we were requesting is, is, is the staffing and some of that, or, or a couple of the positions are related to a new drop center. The other positions are related to existing drop centers. The other thing we have in the budget besides personnel in the recycling program, which covers all the drop centers, is a, a request for $1 million in capital. And that capital would go to improve and, and, and start a new drop center. So that's, that's what's in this budget as far as improvements. As far as what really drove an overall 5%, I would say it was inflation and the factor that, you know, to continue with the same service and the improvements we put in last year in place, that it was really changed the scorecard of a lot of our collectors and their performance. This year, rather than just focus on collections, we want to focus on the other services. So we want to get into the drop centers and how we're operating those. We know that the Lower Richland Drop Center, for instance, is grossly undersized for the amount of volume that, that comes to that. And that's something that we need to improve on. And then we don't have a drop center west of the river for, kind of up in the Ballantyne I've been asked if, you know, would a unperson, you know, an unstaffed location work? And we did try that before my time up in Ballantyne, outside the fence of our roads and drainage camp that also is shared with utilities up there. And they tell me it became a large, you know, dump site, you know, that, that had to be managed a lot. So there's no way to, you know, to, you put out four dumpsters, you're going to have six dumpsters the next day full of materials out there and unsorted. So we don't think that the unstaffed program would work very well, but we do have in this budget staffing and capital to do it right. And certainly in 2025, we would probably have some capital to finish that.
And you are, Ms. Newton.
Thank you. And, and maybe this is also something we can, can talk about offline because again, you know, what I'm looking to understand is, again, not just what we're doing with this budget, and thank you for clarifying that a lot of it is driven by inflation, but, and maybe this isn't the capital plan, what we see is needing to happen, that no funding has been identified for, that we maybe don't, don't fund in this budget cycle, but we have to fund in another. And I would be remiss, as the, the Lower Richland Dump Site is, is in District 11, if I didn't say that I think it is important for us to look at where we have our dump sites. I think for me, I guess it becomes a little challenging to say, we recognize that this one dump site is getting way more volume than it can staff, let's go open another one, as opposed to, you know, are there ways that we can prioritize shoring up the locations that we already have before we look at bringing in additional locations? So that's just something that I would want to put out there. I mean, we, for the benefit of all my constituents, already had a meeting this week just to talk about how we can handle what's happening there. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You recognize Director Maloney?
Thank you, sir. If I may, just kind of add one more thing to the horizon. So we, we mentioned two drop centers, one we don't have and one we do. And then we have another very limited commodities recycling drop off center on Clemson Road. And, uh, General Manager Ansel is also looking, you know, we would want to look for a better place off that road where people can actually get to it and have more full service there. So that would be step three in improving that to an area that would help more citizens.
Just one more thing, I, I would also be remiss if I didn't say, this has just been a year when your, everyone's, all the staff at Richland County work really hard. You're the staff that's standing here right now at the microphone just to acknowledge how hard your team has worked and been working to serve the needs of, of Richland County citizens. I know many of us have had you on speed dial and so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
If I get to you.
Okay.
Mackey, Mr. Brown wanted to chime in.
15 seconds. One of the questions was, what do the residents get? And I want to remind you again, as an enterprise system, this is designed to pay for itself. So until recently, so kudos again to the staff, the, the fund was not paying for itself. So technically the fund owes the county. So when you think about investments and future investments, understand that really there is funding that the county put forth in, in good faith, great, of course, but really the, the system needs to pay for funding that it should have had standalone on its own as a business.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Weaver and then Ms. Mackey.
Mike, thank you. The special services, you mentioned 15 employees. What, what is special services? What do they do?
So that's a, a division with Mr. George Wilson is the general manager and we have different section leaders that, that help him. And that is all kinds of things. So they, their main thing is, is roadside pickup. They use inmate labor for that. The inmate labor comes from the state work camp. And by providing that service to us, they get, if they work for us for say, six months, they would get three months off their, their time. So these are volunteers who are doing that. They also help with all kinds of things, moving furniture, moving election machines, different things like that. It could be for the city, Columbia, when they had an election, it could be for us. That is why I mentioned it's part of that countywide millage, it's providing service throughout the county.
So kind of a general, generalized crew in some sport fashion. All right, another question I had, you, you mentioned 100,000 in interest. What was, as a revenue source, what was, what was that from? Money sitting in the enterprise fund or? And what fiscal year was that? Because with rates, with rates moving up, they've tripled.
Ms. Ham from Finance.
Ms. Ham, you're recognized.
Stacy Ham, Finance Director. Since the fees are on their tax bills, the tax bills come in in December and January. So we basically collect that money at that time and we hold it basically for the whole year to be paying for the services. So the taxes that come in the fall cover January through December. So we get all the money, 30 million upfront and we're, then we use it throughout the year. So we're making interest on that.
Well, I certainly understand that.
Until we pay the, um.
But what I'm saying is rates have tripled on money markets. Can, can we project a higher rate?
That's why it was so high. In prior years, it was like 20,000.
Oh, 20,000, okay.
Now, yeah, so it's.
So the hundred already flexed the increase.
Yeah, that's the, that's what the current amount is.
Shoot, I thought I found some money. All right. And then the other question, I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman, just one more. How, how do our rates compare to other counties? Like, do we ever do an analysis of Kershaw, Orangeburg, Lexington? I mean, are we, I assume competitive with that or?
Yes, sir, we did a, a report on that last year. We can provide that again.
I'd be interested in seeing that.
And we know a lot of Lexington County residents that, that pay monthly and, and pay more than this or, or similar. But we also know that we have some unique things here, like bulk item pickup, four items of pickup, as many times as you want to call in for, for, for part of that service a month as for your curbside. Lexington County charges 30 dollars an item.
All right, last question, Ms. Chairman, I promise. All right, so, you know, I deal with folks hauling stuff off from properties. So if I have a, if I'm a guy that has a trailer, a 12-foot trailer, and I drive out to Monticello Road to take it to a landfill, what are my options to pay for that? Is it cash at the gate, checks? How, how do y'all accept payment there?
Uh, so you're commercial? If you're a resident, you don't pay.
Oh, I'm assuming commercial because.
John Ansel's here to get into this, scale operation.
Hi, John Ansel, General Manager of Solid Waste.
These are just regular handy men. They're not with a company or anything.
Okay, a handyman would qualify as a commercial business in the eyes of the landfill. So as a resident of Richland County, you are entitled through the millage assessment to utilize a recycle center free of charge, providing its compliant material for the facility. Anything past that would be considered a commercial.
Okay.
So at a commercial, you would come through the landfill, you would scale in. Today it's 25 dollars a ton. Obviously we're requesting the slight increase. We take credit cards at the landfill or if you can establish a credit account with the county, those are the two ways that we accept payment at the landfill.
And at those locations, do we have cameras at those places taking payments?
Yes, sir, we do. Yeah. The, the only place that we take payments is the landfill up on 1070 Kaufman Road and we have a, a barrage of cameras all over the place. We watch as much as we possibly can.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Vice Chair and Ms. Barron, and then Mr. Branham.
Thank you. First, I just want to say, I agree with Ms. Newton and we all appreciate everything that this department does, but definitely, definitely have to say a special shout out to special services because if you don't know yet what they do, let me tell you, anything you need, special services deliver and I appreciate them anytime they return a phone call or email because our constituents always have a special request and they know how to handle it in a very professional way. So thank you. But my, I guess, question and kind of comment, we talked about locations of, I guess, future projected sites. And where I am in the Northeast, I know a lot of my constituents complain about not having a site near, and they do drive to Lower Richland because that is the side of town that is closest for them to get to, to drop. And so I guess as we look at strategic locations, I understand we don't have one in Blythewood, but how do we make sure that, okay, if they're driving to Lower Richland, that we can accommodate that because that growth is already there, that population is already going there? So how are we planning to really make sure we address that? Is that in this proposed budget or are you asking to address that later?
That is a question I address every single day, to be honest with you. When you are looking at facilities outside of just say the landfill, something that is going to accommodate the residents of the county, we are lagging behind in, in the number of facilities. Richland County is a large county. We, we 400 and some odd thousand residents, whatever that number is, and these drop centers are available to each and every resident, okay? But we have that disparity when we have one all the way down, you know, in, in my mind, close to Kershaw County, when we have another one practically to Fairfield County in the landfill, and then we have one on Clemson Road that unfortunately is becoming more and more obsolete because of the amount of traffic on Clemson Road. You just can't get to it, okay? So we have been looking in my time here as an opportunity to strategically place more and more of these drop off facilities to where they're going to benefit the most amount of people. Obviously, cost is always an issue. Sometimes space becomes an issue. We can't always go and purchase two, three, five, seven acres, whatever that might be in an exact location we want. But one of the things we do, do sometimes is we will just draw concentric circles around an area. We'll do a one mile, a three mile, a five mile radius. And we will look at the impact of that radius and say, okay, I'm hitting a lot of people in this area. And then I might go over here, just say west of that, and I might do the same thing, or I say, okay, I'm not nearly serving as many people as perhaps I can serve here. That's the idea going forward with your recycle centers. The unfortunate part of every recycle center is simply this, they cost a lot of money, they're a continuing cost, and they're also something that doesn't generate revenue. Okay, they don't. I promise you, with all the recycling contracts Director Maloney talked about, they cost a lot of money, but it is a necessary service. It's a necessary service that we try and make up in other ways. So I can assure you, as long as I am here, providing he doesn't throw me out tomorrow, we want to improve the number of drop centers that we are offering the residents. Because if I lived in Ballantyne, if I lived in the Northeast, I would not want to drive to Lower Richland, that's a haul. I would not, certainly not want to come to the landfill, that's even further. We're going to better serve our communities if we are able to achieve the goal of at least three or four more of these in the next 10 years. Hopefully more. That's the goal today.
And so I hear three to four more in the next 10 years and I guess I, I would like, if possible, to see kind of a thought out plan of that because I mean, the way that we're growing, I don't know if 10 years is too long to say that. And so I guess I would like to know how we, not say, I don't wish you have an answer now, I just am saying I'm interested, would like to see it in more than just Ballantyne, but we're really looking at where we need them all together and how we can get there.
Yes, ma'am.
Director Maloney?
Just want to add that in, in any event, you know, the, the ideal thing is to be close to a population area, but we also know that, you know, that might be difficult as far as we would have to have, you know, a public informational meeting and, and really provide a study and multiple sites and options so that we can hone in on the best case for, for the county.
Want to call on Councilman Pugh, he has to leave here shortly, and then after Councilman Pugh, then you, Councilman Branham, and then Ms. Newton wanted to jump in again as well.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Maloney, with special services, I know you just mentioned that we do things like helping with picking up election machines and roadside pickup. And I want to echo the same sentiments as Councilwoman Mackey and Councilwoman Shaquise, I mean Newton, saying that they are magnificent. But the question for me is, do we split any costs with the city once that, those services go over and help with anything that goes on in the city?
Uh, no, sir. That, so that millage that we're talking about on the millage side is countywide. So everyone in the county pays that.
Got you. Thank you, sir. And I just want to say, a year and a half ago, we sat here and we were bold enough to tell you guys that you needed to step your game up and do a better job. And I just want to say kudos to you and your staff for doing a great job and making sure that the contractors are doing what they supposed to do. The trash situation has got tremendously better. We have gone, I've gone from maybe 10, 15 calls a day to a call once every blue moon. So I just want to tip, tip my hat to you and your staff for doing a magnificent job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Barron and then Ms. Newton.
Well said, Derek Pugh from District Two. I agree. My only question, excuse me, my question was, you talked about the, the new sites. Are you specifically talking about the one in Southeast or is there another one?
So in the Southeast or in the Eastover area?
Yeah.
It, it needs a new site, yes, from where it is. But we're also looking at Clemson Road, so in the Upper East. And then we said that would likely be from what the needs are right now, something that we would come in, in next year and start presenting that. right now, something that we would come in in next year and start presenting that, because, you know, just that we're budget constrained as far as what we can do each year, but we would plan that as the next step. It was also our thought that that needs to move further north and away from Interstate 20 area on up into somewhere that would serve Blathwood and the developments in the East.
Okay, that I had to ask, because it wasn't clear to me when you kept saying new sites, exactly what you were saying, if it was the Clemson and Eastover.
And I'll respond, maybe I forgot, also the, and also in the Ballentine area, there's a new site potential there, too.
Thank you.
So, one question, two pretty quick comments. So, the reference was made a couple times to debts from prior years, so what's the number on that? Could be roughly.
I'm indicating, they're indicating 12 million.
$12 million?
Yes.
That, on paper, your fund is in debt to the county, is that right? Okay. And then, I just wanted to, again, call attention, so have you already negotiated that 5% increase on the contracts that were alluded to, that were controlled by CPI?
Yeah, General Manager Lancel did a really good job looking at what's going to happen next year. We put in there a forecast of 8%, and we don't know what it's going to be, but we put it the worst case we've seen in two years, so we put 8% in there to look at what's going to happen in the second half of the fiscal year of '24.
Okay, so the 5% negotiation, is that done or not done yet?
Well, the 5% would be on our revenue side.
Okay.
In our recommendation to council for our collection rates to the customers, to our residents, but the CPI did go up just past January by, you know, 6.5%.
Okay, so we didn't negotiate that down?
We, no, sir.
Okay.
We did, we did start, they were going like this, and then we had the negotiations with new starting points, and they're going back up, so.
Okay.
But, with a step.
Okay, well, good, I appreciate you both. We, the three of us, Mr. Lancel, Mr. Maloney, and I, were out looking at property in Ballentine very early on in my term, and as fate would have it, the utility company was using the helicopter with the giant chainsaw to cut tree limbs in the same area where we were, and I tried to play it cool for as long as I could, but that helicopter with a chainsaw kept getting closer, and I thought we were in, like, Indiana Jones or something. At one point, I finally said, should we run? But anyway, yeah. The almost-as-mighty District 1 is really looking forward to a drop center site, hope we can keep that in the budget. If Richland County is a little bit of a triangle, two points in the triangle have drop centers that everybody would like to see improvements on, my point in the triangle has no drop center, so I hope we can make that happen in 2024. Thank you. Ms. Newton, and then Ms. McBride.
And since I've spoken before, I'm happy to, wait, and so I'm just going to address this to Mr. Brown, because the points that we've made, I think, echo what I'm not sure that I expressed clearly. This is an area, obviously, we serve all of Richland County, it's critical to all of Richland County, it's also clear that we have a lot of long-term needs, and so my request is to understand what those long-term needs are, and what our funding is, looks like well beyond this budget horizon, because it's clear that we have to make plans for it, and so, I'm trying to get you money, Mr. Maloney, this is my question, if that helps you come up with an answer, so that's a request that I have, thank you.
Question, or that's a comment, so? Before I move on...
Take it however you want, I'm done.
Well, you said it was for Mr. Brown, so before I moved on...
It's a comment for Mr. Brown that is also a request for information.
Got you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, and I was going to say, as you all were talking about, that probably the best way to funnel that specifically is to a strategic ad hoc committee, because that's the planning purpose for your long-term strategies, for your priorities. So I hear what you're saying, I got it.
You're saying I need to tell Ms. Mackey?
No, no, I'm just saying out loud that that's the mechanism, that way we can keep track of it, and it can flow, that's all, but I got it.
Ms. McBride?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's called geographical equity, but in terms of services, and I think that's good, that's a good point. I just want to add to Ms. Newton's statement, and I'm supporting your statement, Ms. Newton, that we are doing enterprise, Mr. Brown, but it's also essential, so when we look at it, we can't just look at it as enterprise, these are essential services that are needed by Richland County citizens, so we need to take that under consideration, whether we send it to a strategic planning committee, I don't want to get stuck in a committee, but that's something that needs to take place, and it's very important. The other part is that I would be remiss, because this is one of my favorite departments, Mr. Mahoney and Director Lancel and Mr. Davis, Director Davis. I just want to also publicly thank you, and I want to thank you not so much for responding to council members, but the sensitivity that you have in responding to citizens. It is outstanding, and if we could see more of that, we could do, it would be a win-win situation for all, so I just want to thank you for the services that you provide.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ms. McBride?
We might want to stop here.
That was my hope. Okay. Director Maloney, does that conclude your presentation, or you have more?
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Yes. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, gentlemen. So now we're going to have our last presentation, that's going to come from our utilities partners, as you mentioned earlier, recognize Mr. Davis. So, Mr. Davis, would you just take a moment, and, again, brief introduction of your system, and then proceed?
Good afternoon, thank you so much for having us, I'm Bill Davis, Director of Utilities. I do want to say a couple of things, we have a lot of slides in here that I'll kind of brush over, I wanted to have something to memorialize where we are and how we got where we are with the water and sewer, that we can look at year after year. So we put a lot of data in this presentation, and that data is for your information and for our future reference, because it is hard to find data over time, it's so good now that we have these presentations online, and we can go look them up, that's very helpful. One thing I wanted to say before I got started, as part of my data on the bullet points, I would like to commend Mr. Eversman with his little airplane bullet points, I think, if Ms. English were here, I would say, I'll try to have a poopy emoji for next time when I do mine, I want to step up my game a little bit, so. We're going to skip on in here, so I want to do, I like to keep it light, so sometimes things are heavy, we like to, laughter's good like a medicine, right? So I like to laugh a lot, so, again, my deputy director is not here, Johnny Hussein, these are numbers, you can reach us at any time. I would like to recognize Jessica Mancini. Jessica is our office manager, and I'm just going to tell you, without her, I would not be able to do this job. I'll recognize some more of my staff here in a moment, I did bring all of our managers of every department, and skipping into the next slide, I know why y'all had me last, because you figured I'd be tired and I'd be ready to go, too. So, we are an enterprise fund, we provide water and sewer services in two distinct locations within Richland County. There are a lot of other service providers that are around and about us, and some on our behalf, and the other sections of the county, but with that, we do fund ourselves in a large portion, you know, we do receive some grants, so periodically, we'll do rate studies, and those rate studies, you know, for you that don't understand or know about rate studies, that rate study is to kind of balance your checkbook, and obviously, at the end of the day, you'd like to have, you know, even, you know, you want expenses to match your budget and your revenue, so we're trying to do that, and I want to show you that in some slides, and we'll separate everything out by water and sewer in this presentation, and I'll have the asks that we're looking for in the future meetings here at the end. So, with that being said, what does the rate study show? It shows where are we spending our money, it kind of identifies the hot points, you know, what do we absolutely have to have, what do we want to have, and what do we need to have, but most importantly, how do we keep water quality up, and how do we keep the environment safe? So that's the thing, what do we need to do that? That's staffing, operation, maintenance, customer service, you'll see some of that here in the presentation as we go forward. So geographically, I like to show this, because this slide really identifies how broad our, let me see if I can minimize this just a little bit here, I don't want to mess anything up, but, okay, there you go. Let me get back in here. There we go, okay. So you see the two faint pink ones on the outside, that's our two systems, so they're smack dab in the middle of the city of Columbia, we're the little star right there where we are in the middle, it's a long way from our system from one side to the other, it's about an hour, and so there is a lot of travel that takes place between going from one system to the other, so we, with the new staff that you gave us last year, when we increased the system by about 25%, when we opened up the Southeast, that increased our staffing by five people, and we are really appreciative of that, because now we can dedicate people to the Southeast and to the Northwest, and we'll tell you about how many customers we have as we go a little bit further into this in the next chart. I could spend, well, you know, ACA Thomas says I can take five minutes to tell you my name, but I could spend a whole day. I literally, I literally could spend a whole day talking about staffing, and I think you all know where we are as a country, you know, trying to find workforce, and so I'll just suffice it to just give you a couple of tidbits, we are at 80%, 86% staffed, and that's pretty good, with our neighbors, some of our neighbors down at 30-something percent, a lot of them at 60%, so having 86% is really good, but one of the things I want to highlight is, it's very difficult for us to find people that want to work in maintenance, and not everybody wants to be on call 24/7, 365, and our people are, and all of us are on call, but the maintenance crew gets the blunt of it, when the call comes in at 2:00 in the morning on Christmas, when the call comes in at 2:00 in the morning on Easter, or last weekend when about six or eight of us were working, or a couple weekends ago, when we were working on Easter, you know, everybody else is out looking for Easter eggs, we were trying to find, you know, make sure we weren't having any sewer leaks with that big rain we had over the Easter weekend, so it's hard to find folks that are really dedicated and want to do that, and we try to fill those positions, but about as fast as we fill them, we empty them, so we're trying to find innovative ways to use artificial intelligence, use other things that can tell us what the big problems are, so that we can try to salvage our people and their time, and having them out there all the time. Sewer assets, I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, we've, y'all have seen this slide, we have about 300 miles of sewer, and I like to put things in illustration, so 300 miles of sewer, if you lined up all the sticks of pipe that we have, and you could go all the way to Birmingham, Alabama, from Irma to South Carolina, that's a lot of pipe. We have about 60 pump stations, and it takes a lot of effort to, one of the big plugs I like to put is, with the wipes and the other solids that are put into the sewer system, they're detrimental to our pumps, they're costing us money, they're costing us time and effort, and that's what these, a lot of these calls at 2:00 in the morning are when a pump gets clogged, and I plan on doing a video, I need to talk with Susan O'Kane and say, I'd love to show a video of what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, because people flush the stuff that they shouldn't be, it's pee, poo, and toilet paper, that's all you need to put in there, toilet paper, as is paper, three peas in the poo. So, that being said, I'll skip on down to critical objectives, there's always a poo reference in here, so, critical objectives, I'm not going to go into a lot of this, but I think Ms. McBride said it so eloquently, the customer service, whether it's our problem or not, I think most of you have dealt with my department, we do everything we can, and every call, whether it's about water and sewer from Richland County or not, we go extra mile, and we want to make sure that every customer is satisfied when we get off the phone with them, and we get irate customers, we got happy customers, you know, we got, you know, we do everything we can, and that's important, we want to maintain a culture of inclusiveness, we try to make everybody feel welcome at our department, and we love what we're building, and our culture is great, and I think that all of my people can attest to that. We want, obviously, to provide competitive wages and keep and maintain and retain our employees. The next slide, I won't go through all these, I'm just going through a few. We want to make sure that we're staying in compliance, and maintaining compliance is something, I think every citizen wants to go to bed at night and think, you know, my water's safe, my environment's safe, the creek that my children are playing in is safe, and I think that, you know, for my people, and our concern is, we want to make sure that that level of service is there, it costs money, you know, to have that level of service, it costs money to maintain that resiliency in the system, and so we have to spend that money to make sure that we can be safe, and so that's our objective, we come to bat, and we do that every day. So, progress on our challenges, not going to go through this, but I wanted you to see that, this is the slide we put up last year, and as you see most of those bullet points, which next time will be poop, show that most of it's green, and green means we either have done it or we're in progress, and we still have a few months left in the year to get a couple more of those objectives done, and one of those bullet points is, we need, we need to get that wastewater plant up to speed down in Eastover, and we hope to skip funding, which if you haven't heard, the governor signed that today, so we're going to get some additional 500 and some million dollars as a state from the Fed, so that's very important, you know, we're getting a lot of projects, we have a project in the queue, and that's to expand the wastewater treatment plant at Eastover, and so we hope, you know, our fingers are crossed that we'll get some money from that skip grant. So, staff, this is where I wanted to recognize folks, one of those things in that bullet point up above here was to have a strong presence in the water community, and what we've got here is, I wanted to recognize some of my staff, four out of these folks on this list are managers, or me, the director, that have been recognized in the water industry this year, this past year, so, first of all, the manager of engineering, Dr. Sahad Kilka, if you would stand, Dr. Kilka was a speaker in the recent environmental conference, he spoke on procedures and policies to developments, and putting forth a development at Richland County, and how to do that, so we're leading the way in the biggest environmental conference in the state, and we have our director of engineering speaking in that, and it makes me proud. Next, Mr. Glimmy Hames, now, Glimmy is our operations manager, Glimmy retired, and my predecessor, Shahid Khan, called me one day, and he said, hey, I need you to find me a wastewater operator. I said, well, I know a guy, and so, Glimmy was a rock star when he retired from Casey, and we brought him back, and I keep trying to get him to promise me five more years, and so, Glimmy is a teacher of teachers, I would have to say that, you know, he has, he's been a friend of mine for 20-something years, and Glimmy provides operations training for operators that are coming up through the ranks to do wastewater treatment, and for the first time this year, at the environmental conference, the wastewater operations was taught as a track. I was the moderator, and Glimmy was one of the teachers, and he had a packed house, I've got pictures of 80 or 90 people at that show, and Glimmy was teaching up there, so, Glimmy, thank you, we appreciate your service. You've already previously, Chairman Walker, and the council has recognized me for the lifetime service award with the Water and Environment Association, but I was recently elected as the nominations chair for the state and the district, and it makes me very proud to be on that, because the next person, well, Joey Bell Castro got Maintenance Person of the Year, Joey is a rising star in the Water and Environment Association, we are seeing him step up his game in the local district as well as the state, and so the next person in line here is Mr. Mike Turan, and so, as you see, there's a plethora of things that Mike has accomplished, and he is a rising star, and as the nominating committee chair, I have my eyes on you, Mike, so, Mike is the guy that gets the calls, 365, 2:00 in the morning, the alarms go off, his phone never stops, this is Mike. Mike works hard for Richland County every single day, 365 days, thank you, Mike. So sewer rates. So sewer rates, we're in a pretty good shape, and I'll tell you why. If you look at this, the rates themselves were not raised for nine years, actually, we lowered rates one of those years in between, and what happens if you don't do a rate study, you find yourself... And what happens if you don't do a rate study, you find yourself getting out of balance. And we got out of balance, and we end up having to have three years of rate increases in the sewer system. That has put us in a pretty good position, and we are looking at a rate study in 2024. But this year, we're fine, and you're going to see a lot of our neighbors are going to be asking for sewer rate increases because they were a little bit behind with the pandemic. But we were on track and on schedule. And my predecessor, Shahid Khan, had gotten that accomplished before he left. And I think that was very wise, and we appreciate the support because that has put us in a good position. So the sewer revenue, there's a couple of bullet points I wanted to just point out here, not going to belabor this, but you'll see a steady increase in revenue in the sewer side. The one year that we had a dip was the 2020, 2021. And of course, everybody knows what that was. That was nonpayment. We lost about 10% of our revenue to nonpayment when we were not cutting people off for not paying. And so we lost, you know, about $1 million as part of that pandemic. And we've seen a steady increase in tap fees, pretty consistent with that. And did you have a question?
I did. I was waiting for the chair to...
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just a quick question about the lost revenue. Did we not make that whole with ARPA?
I think so. I'll let...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I can ask, Mr.?
Thank you, sir. We actually did allocate funding for that. That year also, part of the reason for the revenue decline was that we did not increase the rates as had been projected. So we did take care of the bad debt, which really turned out not to be that significant. It was about, we only did about $60,000 this past year. We will have one more year to be able to apply that, to see if we can recoup any further monies. But the recollections have improved dramatically since we resumed disconnection of service for nonpayment.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. So water rates, not so good. We have the initial water systems that I can, that we're running now. If you kind of backtrack, other than Murray Point, the current water systems, I went back as far as 2009 looking at data, and we had a $14 base fee, and you can see the usage here. And then we had a rate... I can't find where we've done a rate study for water in the past. I've not been able to locate that. But in 2014, we raised the base rate 43% to get to $20 for the base rate, and the tier was raised by 23% in 2014. There has been no increase of any kind since 2014 for the water system. We did a rate study in-house. We are small enough, I have about 600 water customers, and we're small enough to where I could do that in-house with my staff. And almost everybody in my group had some contributions on that rate study that we did in-house. And we were able to take, also, thank you to the staff in finance and budget to help us pull some of those records. We were able to go backwards and kind of figure out what the average rates were for billings for water. And this is our current rates right here. I wanted to have that again to memorialize those current rates. I'm going to go into the rates in a minute, but I wanted to talk about the water systems really quickly. How did we get into water business? Well, you'll see, you know, again, we have about 600 customers that are active, and that's a really small water system. And the first one I wanted to talk about was Pond Drive. So Pond Drive, actually, I was the design, the project manager for Pond Drive back in those days, and I worked for the county as a consultant, and we took over a failing water system. And this is where I wanted to take a moment to just recognize, I lived in Richson County my entire life. My family's been here for 200 something years. And I'm proud of the fact that when the community calls, this council and this administration and this utility department answers the call. And we've done it time and time again. When there's a failing water system or the community's in jeopardy, we come to the rescue. When there's a failing sewer system and the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control comes and asks for our help, we come to the rescue. So that says a lot about this council, says a lot about this administration, and a lot about our staff as a whole. We're here to help. We're here to watch our community and make sure it's safe. And so we did that in this case with a failing water system. It was a 40-year-old water system. They went bankrupt. We took over. The state helped us to fund some of this, and we were able to fix that system. And the Hopkins Community System, very similar story. You can see these news articles about contaminated groundwater. We came to the rescue. We did it again. That's, I don't want to go into a lot of that. If y'all have questions later, feel free to certainly ask me. Murray Point was given to us by a developer. Right now, that is a very small water system, about 14 customers, and we use water from the city of Columbia. We are a bulk customer for the city in this system. It's the only water that we have in the Northwest system. So that's just a little summary there. So water revenue, you'll see in that 2020 mark, there's a same dip of about 10% loss in revenue in 2020. And then you'll see a dip for last year. Now, we brought, if you recall, we brought the southeast system, and that's a water system and a sewer system, online in 2022. And we gave away a lot of tap fees. So a lot of that revenue from the tap fees was built into that project and was previously understood that we were going to lose a little bit of revenue with regards to those tap fees because we wanted to get people to sign on. So we did that with water and sewer. We lost a little bit of revenue with regards to tap fees. So you'll see the little light blue boxes are tap fees, and the green is the revenue from usage. So as you'll see, we're kind of a little bit of a dip last year, a little bit of dip in 2020, but sort of steady, right? But now we've got the new system. We've added 30 miles of water line. Now we've expanded throughout the southeast, and we are ready for taking on new customers. And we at the utility department are predicting some new customers are going to be coming online in the next two, three years. So looking at revenue, let's just kind of, I'm an engineer, and I'm sort of a nerd, y'all know that. So looking at these numbers, I got kind of, you know, it just tells the story when you look at these graphs. So the green is revenue, and the red solid line is the actual expenditure. What's wrong with this picture? Well, we're spending more than we're making, right? So as Mr. Brown said so eloquently, we are not supporting ourselves. So we've got to do something to support the water system. And with that being said, I think, you know, we haven't had a rate increase in 10 years, and we're going to talk a little bit about how to fix that. As you see, I'm predicting a balanced budget. I'm also predicting an increase in revenue. We've cut everything that could possibly considered as fat from the water budget. And some of that unfortunately involves some of the newer technology. So the meters are very smart meters nowadays, and our meters are 10 years old. And so we're having to replace the meters, and with the technology, they're a lot more expensive. And I'm going to talk about that in a second. So they're a lot more expensive, but they help us with staffing because we have less staff, because we ride by and we get the automatic reading. The customer can look at their meter, and they can see when they get too much use. They can see what their bill is going to be. They can predict a lot of information from just looking at the app. And that's something that's really important for us to get on this technology bandwagon. So a couple more slides, and then I'll talk about the projections that we have. So looking at some of our neighbors, you'll see, I'm having a hard time reading the screen. Oh, yeah. So some of our neighbors are, it's hard to say how these numbers are relative, but people throughout the water industry, and I'm going to have to cheat a little bit because Lori Thomas was with the city of Rock Hill. And as long as I've been in utilities, I've used the Rock Hill Water Study, Water Sewer and Electric Study to see how the neighbors, you know, what their prices are. And everybody uses 6,000 gallons. Now, not everybody actually uses 6,000 gallons, but we're going to have a price comparison that's apples to apples. So when we look at all our fellow utilities, we're kind of saying, okay, if they use 6,000 gallons, how much do they pay? If we use 6,000 gallons, how much do we pay? You'll see, we're kind of right in the middle. And a unique part about this is I know a lot of people aren't familiar with in-city and out-of-city rates. So why do you have, you know, for the most part, out-of-city rates and in-city rates? Well, in-city is in a tighter area. Like I showed you, our systems are really far apart, and we're rural. So there's miles and miles of line that we have to inspect. We have now 115 fire hydrants, and those fire hydrants have to be maintained. Grass has to be cut so the lawnmowers and trucks and stuff aren't hitting them. And they hit them all the time anyway, even if we do cut the grass. But you'll see that the people that are lower than us on cost are the in-city folks. The out-of-city are a little higher than us because they have longer to travel, more expenses, and more maintenance and operation. So coming back over to the base rates, this is with some proposals that I'll talk to you in a little bit more detail, an increase in the base rate and the addition of a hydrant fee. Our neighbors have hydrant fees, we don't, because we now have hydrants, whereas we didn't have that many before. And that, this next slide will kind of clear that up. So looking at what I just said with a bunch of numbers, what did we see on the average water usage? Well, we saw about $30.82 is the average bill that we see from all of our customers averaged out. That's about $30.82. We're looking at hydrant fees of $8, which matches Chapin and Casey, which are similar sized systems around us. And then in adding those fees, you'll see that second bar shows we're not increasing usage fees or not proposing to increase usage fees. We're proposing to add $3 to the base fee, and we're proposing adding an $8 hydrant maintenance fee. And that hydrant fee is, again, lower than some of our neighbors, but pretty on par with a few. And then in '24, '25, if we did a 10% volumetric rate increase, and '25, '26, a 10% volumetric increase, we think we'll be in a good position to be able to sustain ourselves and be self-supporting. So that is a quick summary for the water. It's a good time if anybody has questions about the water.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Bill. So the hydrant fee, if you added the hydrant fee, $8, you said?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't that also lower their property insurance costs if they're closer to a hydrant?
Well, we benefit, it's kind of like we were talking about earlier with the millage. You know, we don't get a millage, we don't get any other additional funding. But everybody in the southeast is benefiting from the fire protection, whether they pay us or not. So they're not, most of them are not our customers, but they still get a benefit.
I know that, but I'm saying like for council to be able to sell this in their districts, like if there was a hydrant fee suddenly added, perhaps their insurance, their homeowner's insurance would go down enough to satisfy that.
I would think that would be the case. I don't have that data in front of me.
I'm pretty sure it would go down. I don't know if it'll go down $8 a month, but it's going to go down for sure.
It should go down. And again, that affects all the community, whether they're our customer or not.
Okay. All right. And my last question is, so you said it's not currently carrying itself. What would the increase, this $3 base fee and the $8 hydrant fee, would that make the water system whole as far as carrying itself?
It's kind of embarrassing.
I mean, roughly.
Kind of embarrassing to talk about the volumes yet because we're so small. So the revenue is about $200,000 on an average. So these new fees would generate about $75,000. So that's almost half as much more as we make now, which almost gets us to the 322, which is the minimum we need. That's as low as I can go, I mean, with the projections. We have to go to about 322.
Still be about 50 short after the new fees.
Yeah, but, yeah. But we are projecting some growth because we think we're going to get some tap fees with some new customers. We know of one neighborhood that's going to provide 550 new homes, and we are the water and sewer provider.
One last question, Mr. Chair. What is the current tap fee?
$1,500, which is low because we provide the meter for homes, but for subdivisions, they're provided by the developer. The meters are provided by the developer.
That seems low. Has that been raised recently?
It is low, and it has not been raised in a long time.
Yeah, we might need to look at that.
I agree.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Davis, for the benefit of the public. Could you just briefly say, you talked about our existing water customers. What if any plans we have to expand water service? And I ask because frequently I get asked if we're going to get in the business, and I just explain how very, very expensive it is. So if you could just address any expansion plans we have or implications, that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a very good point, and it doesn't take much to increase the revenue to a point of sustainability. And previously, I've talked about the fact that if we wanted to have a water treatment plant, which, you know, there are plans, there's an old master plan to show a water treatment plant above the wastewater plant on the Watery River. You really need to have about somewhere between 12,000 and 15,000 customers to put in a water plant, to be able to sustain the added infrastructure, all the billing, all the expenses. But what we do have in play is, thanks to council, we have a tank that's in the design process now. And just to show you again the cost of everything, so our revenue is $200,000. The fee for the tank is about $300,000. So an entire year and a half of revenue for one project to give a tank. And thank you, council, for giving us some ARP money to pay for that tank. And we are planning to use that for the community. It's going to be a very good backup system for us, and it's going to give us the, another leg, so to speak, to be able to expand a water system. A lot of other things, you know, we want those new neighborhoods to be in the area where the new sewer and the new water are so that we can start getting new water customers because the upper part of your district, Ms. Newton, is provided by the city of Columbia. But from Garnas Ferry down is our water system. And so it wouldn't take much growth for us, like this one, we're looking at probably $130,000, $150,000 a year just in tap fees alone from this 550 subdivision that's coming in, where they're going to hopefully be paying for about 111 of those each year for five years. So that would be a lot of revenue from tap fees and a lot of revenue from new customer base. So that's very encouraging for me, I think.
Director Davis, so you said something, and, you know, I'm all for growth and expansion. But now you got some staff, new staff last year, and you're pretty much staffed. But with this expansion, and you're excited about it.
I'm always excited.
Yes, you are. Are we in, do we have the capacity to be able to continue to grow at this rate? And I know with growth comes more ask of staff and such. But if we just look at the staff that you presently have or that you could have if you were fully staffed, you know, Ms. Newton's district is a growing district as well. So the possibility of getting, you know, 500 more homes within the next six months is, there is a possibility. So if we just say that happens, can we hold the growth? Do we have the capacity for this growth?
I got two-part answer for that. You know, first of all, water and sewer separated with staff, except for administration. You know, me, I get to split amongst the two. But when you're looking at the water systems as a whole, I did a little bit of study at, some of my friends at Charlotte Water have a nice study that they did, and that study shows that you need about three staffed people per 1,000 water customers. So we currently have two, and we have 600 customers. So we're right on track with staffing up to about, say, 660. Then we would start looking at, we're going to start itching into that, you know, might need another person to get up to that 1,000 customer level. And then in the sewer system, we added, like I said, from an asset standpoint, we added about 25% to the assets. That's what we're maintaining, the assets. So the customers also cause a problem. Don't get me started on the electric and the fiber companies that are drilling into my pipes, and it's my fault that they drilled into my pipes. That's a continuous battle. That's a whole nother topic. I have another 30-minute conversation for that. So with that being said, we do have some additional effort that'll have to be put forward with all the laterals that go into these new houses. But generally speaking, we added about 10% to 15% on the customer side in the southeast while we added 25% on the assets. So a lot more major assets, not as many customers. So we have some time to grow into that additional staffing for sewer. But water, like I said, we're on the boundary of water. So if we get more water, we will need one more staff, and a lot of our expenses are in the staffing. I hope that answered your question.
You did. Thank you.
Anything else I can ask, Mr.?
Mr. Davis, you kind of gave us the history of how we got into the water business. It was obviously unintentional.
Yes, sir.
Not strategic, not planned. And then you've laid out some steps here in your most recent comments that sound more strategic and planned. Are there other building codes or other measures in place to help us stop the potential codes or other measures in place to help us stop the potential for picking up these sort of haphazard, isolated water systems so that we can continue on a strategic path?
I'll, I'll try to answer that as politically as I can. I think that the answer is, we're going to probably do the right thing, whether that involves a little deviation in our strategic plan or not. We would probably step up to the plate and, and take care of that. Usually, that comes with some assistance, with monetary assistance. So, it's the staffing and the, the negotiation and the procurement and the, you know, the, that collaboration takes time and effort. But the, the funding is usually provided by the state or some funding agency to help us to get over that and to take that system over. And hopefully, like, like the water system at Pond Drive, when I was the engineer, we, we rehabilitated that system and made it viable with funding from, from the state. So...
Follow-up. But, but with current development codes to the best of your knowledge, are these types of things less likely to happen now? Because it seems like a lot of what we picked up were, were developments, isolated developments, and whatever long-term plan just, you know, stopped at some point, fell through.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, I'm going to jump in and let him pick up. Please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that the county is a larger system. The, the COG and those sort of organizations who oversee the 208 plan structure want the smaller system to be subsumed by the larger systems, so to create a connectivity. And, and as a result of that, while it may not be strategic for the county, if smaller systems do have those issues, then the larger system, which is the county, for example, they really want all those to be unified and connected so that you don't have these independent one-offs. Please correct me if I'm wrong, sir.
No, sir, that is correct. It's called regionalization. And to regionalization, there are a lot of small systems, even within our system. You know, we've got three or four small systems built within the Northwest system where you are. And those systems, I would love to be able to put those into a regional system, which is our Broad River Wastewater Plant in the future. And those things take money and time and negotiation and contracts. So, that's the things that we would have to, to start entering into. That is not saying that we wouldn't do it. We'd love to do that. We'd like to see regional plans. So, I, two more slides and...
All right. I'll, I'll talk to you later about, about that. Thank you.
No, anytime.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Don.
Okay. So, two more slides. The, this, this is something that a lot of our neighbors do, and I actually was involved in one of our, I don't know if you've heard of Metro Connects up in Greenville, but that, those folks and I were talking, and we got a lot of feedback from the communities around South Carolina, down in Charleston, Low Country, here in the Midlands. And we don't charge a lot of fees for plan review. And a lot of times, what we're seeing with the shortage of work staff, you know, we're seeing incomplete plans. We're seeing construction that's not finished, and we go out there to look at it, and then we have to go look at it again and again and again because it's not to standard, it's not to code. Same thing with the engineering. You know, the engineering plans come in, they're not complete. They don't match our ordinance. They meet somebody else's ordinance. We've had other peoples, like other municipalities' details put on our plans, and we're like, that doesn't meet our code, and that doesn't meet our ordinance. So, we're finding ourselves in the engineering department overwhelmed with these repeat failures from these folks. So, we're trying to get them to get a little skin in the game, and that skin in the game is something a lot of our neighbors are doing, charging review fees, charging for administration fees, charging for inspection fees. That's something that will limit them from coming back time and time again with a bad set of plans or time and time again with a bad construction job. And that's something that we're trying to curb. And I think we will see that they'll be ready when they call us because they're going to have to pay if they don't. And that's this next slide. And the last slide...
May I ask a quick question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
I can ask, Ms. Newton.
Do you need council approval to implement those changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
That would come in the form of an ordinance change.
Thank you.
And I haven't done that yet, so...
We're, we're ready for you.
The administration's going to have to help me. All right. So, the last slide, all these numbers, you can look at them. The green is new fees. The, the pink is where we maybe deviate a little bit from what administration's numbers were and our numbers that we've projected from in-house evaluations. So, a quick summary is on the left. Reduced water and sewer personnel charges somewhat. I know Mr. Brown already alluded to some of that. Increased sewer operating, we need a little more money in the, in the operating budget. We want to reduce the capital, so we're, we're bumping the capital down. We want to reduce water operating. We, we don't want to, but we have to. We're going, that's some of the costs that we're incurring right now. We want to increase the water capital based on our projections, that we think we're going to get those tap fees, that we didn't, we didn't get any credit for tap fees. We believe we're going to have at least $39,000 worth of tap fees. And we want to add the sewer review fees, and we want to add the $8 fire hydrant fee, and we want to add the $3 base fee to the water revenue. And that's the, the basic summary of what we're asking today.
Questions or comments for Director Davis? And before you step away, Director Davis, I believe we have Councilwoman Teracio and Councilwoman English that they are attending virtually. So, just want to recognize them. Councilwoman Teracio, any questions or comments for Director Davis on this, under this item for utilities? Maybe she didn't hear me. What about Ms. English? Are you there?
I'm here.
Good afternoon to you. You have anything for Director Davis?
I promise you, he and I have talked, and I clearly understand. I thank him for all that he's does and just making me aware. So, thank you, Director Davis.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, Director Davis. And so, at this point, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, members of council, those who are present, those who are online, what we want to do is start the conversation, give you information, have, give you plenty of time to start thinking through how you might want to address these things from the, these particular system side. We got a long way to go. So, you, again, not requesting any decisions today. Certainly looking forward to continued discussions and feedback. Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of council. That concludes our presentation for enterprise funds.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And also, I would like to extend kudos as well, which has been done earlier by many of my colleagues, you know, regarding just the, the presentations this afternoon and the thoroughness of the presentations and the patience that has been shown by your staff as far as addressing all the concerns as well as questions from the body. And so, you know, again, just, I'll thank you. And this has certainly been edifying and very helpful as we, you know, as we go into budget season and having to make some pretty big decisions. So, again, thank you. All right. If there's no other business, on to item four. German, I entertain a motion.
Move to German.
Second.
It's moved to properly second. It's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Chris McPhee.
Livingston?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Teracio?
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Earned.